Hello, good evening and welcome. Today we're talking about fostering. So it's nice that you've been able to join us for this YouTube online event. We're hoping that during this time that there'll be people joining us and that might be at different times. So we might have to repeat some of what we've started saying. But basically, this is your opportunity to ask us questions. You can ask questions at any time, just send them through and then they'll come through to me and I'll be able to answer them. But in the meantime, if there aren't any questions, then I'm just going to do a little bit of talking about fostering, fostering with Oxfordshire County Council. A little bit about the process, about the types of fostering, what is involved, a bit of myth busting and various different things that might be of interest to you. But like I said, at any point, if you want to ask us a question, that'd be really helpful. And then that will feel a bit more interactive when we can be able to talk to you. My name is Maria. I'm the Marketing and Recruitment Officer for Oxfordshire County Council. And this is Sarah and your role is?
I am the Fostering Inquiry Officer.
So basically, my job really is about getting the message out there that we need more foster carers in the Oxfordshire area. And Sarah's job is all about talking to people when they first make contact with us. Sarah's going to talk a little bit later, a bit more about what is actually involved in that and what it's like when you first make that first call. But in the meantime, I probably start off with talking a little bit about different types of fostering and about the process. So when you foster with Oxfordshire County Council, just like with any fostering that you do, whether it's with us or with somebody else, there are different types of fostering, sorry. And that are things like the short term, long term, emergency foster care and relief foster care. The reason we have different types of fostering is because we're fitting with what a child needs. So it depends how long a child is staying with the carers. It's dependent on whether they go back home to their family, whether they move on to adoption, for instance. And so we kind of have to fit with that child's needs. Do you want to talk a little bit about what happens when somebody makes that first call before we talk any more about fostering?
Yeah, okay. So I'm, I will be your first, first call. I will receive either a phone call from you or you can inquire with us online. And then I will send you all the information that we have, give you a bit of background about what kind of services we offer, how the pay works, how much support and everything you're going to be getting. You will have that for about 48 hours. And then within that time, it gives you a chance to discuss it with your partner, if you've got one, or your family or friends. And then I will give you a call where I will complete what we call an initial inquiry form. So it's just basic information at the beginning. So it'll be information based on your household. So anybody living with you, a bit of information on your occupation and kind of trying to gauge what kind of knowledge you have and what kind of service you think that you can offer. So once all this information is taken down, I will then pass this on to a social worker who will come out then and complete an initial home visit with you. And then hopefully your journey can start from there.
I suppose really, one of the things to think about is the different reasons that some people rule themselves out. So quite often people feel that is a particular type of person that is going to be able to foster with us, which is completely, you know, untrue. We're not looking for certain-
You don't have to earn a certain amount of money. You don't have to be in a relationship. It's, it's, you know, you can have your own children as well.
Yeah.
There's, there's a lot of things that puts people off, but when you speak to them, they generally think, oh, we didn't quite realise that.
Yeah, exactly. A lot of people think that you, you know, would be married, that a single person can't foster. But obviously, we have lots of single carers.
Same sex couples as well.
Yep. People think if they can't drive, that might mean that they can't foster. But actually, we do have some foster carers that don't drive. You do have to take into consideration things like whether you would be able to travel to some meetings.
Family contact home.
Yep. So it is about how easily you can access transport. Some of the other things that people worry about, whether they'll be able to foster is if they work full time.
Yeah.
Here, what we say is basically you can work and foster, but then that might make a difference on the age of the child that we would look at placing with you. Because you've got to be more available. And obviously, if you're fostering a child under school age, then you've got to be at home.
But it depends on the, but it's the short term or the relief in a type of service depends on your working hours as well, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Because we always want to encourage people to still be working because you can't be guaranteed to have a placement from the minute you start. It can take some time. So obviously, we want you to not be out of pocket and would encourage you to carry on working for as much as you can.
Yeah, because you can't get, you can't kind of depend on your income from fostering. Just to explain, when you foster, you get paid a fostering allowance, which covers the cost of having the child living with you. So that covers things like having their pocket money. There's always some savings that you put aside for the child, clothing them, things like their, you know, school books.
School trips.
School trips. All of the basic things, that's what the fostering allowance covers. On top of that, you do receive a fee, which is the element of pay that is really there for you to kind of, and that can depend on your skills and your experience, what level fee you get paid at which point. So you probably might come into fostering and you'll be on the level one. And then as you do a little bit more fostering and you gain some more experience and skills and training. Some people have relevant skills and training that means that they can come in to foster at a higher level. Maybe if you've transferred from another authority or another fostering agency. So your fee is dependent on your skills and experience, but that's the money that covers the cost of, not covers the cost, that is really a reward to you to foster. Obviously, why Sarah was saying about whether you work is because if you don't have a child with you, then you don't receive the fee or the allowance. And you might have a break between having a child staying with you for a period of time, just while we're finding another child. Or it might be that you choose to have a break for a while. So that's something that you need to have, take into consideration. One of the things that we do do when somebody first starts fostering is we pay a £1,500 fee, which is like a transition, like a fee to kind of transition into foster care.
Kind of helps set up as well, doesn't it?
Yeah.
You need to buy your bed in or anything for the child.
Yeah, you might want to decorate the bedroom or anything like that, just to make, you know, the house be ready to foster. One of the other things that we would say is really good if you foster with Oxfordshire County Council is we have something called the Mockingbird Scheme, which is a specific type of support that is put in place for foster carers. And it's kind of like building up a little community of foster carers. You have what's called a hub carer and then you have satellite carers. So basically, they all work together and support each other. But really, when you're fostering with Oxfordshire County Council, we're one whole community of foster carers. And it's very local and it's all about offering support groups that are in your area. So for instance, we have support groups in the city of Oxford. We have support groups in Kidlington, Banbury, Abingdon. We try to make it so that you don't have to travel too far to go to these support groups. Support groups, obviously, from other foster carers is really important, which is why we have the groups. And we also encourage you to link up with other foster carers, for instance, carer coordinators. And just, you know, be that local community of carers. We have things like online support for carers, like a Facebook group and things like that, and WhatsApp groups and things of ways that are really accessible for you to get support from other carers. We also obviously offer you support from social workers. So you get a dedicated social worker who looks after you. They're called your supervising social worker. And she's there and her role is purely to look after you, isn't it? It's kind of help you with your training, come around the house and do, you know, have reviews with you to see if you could kind of maybe want to offer a different type of fostering. They check that everything that you need to be a foster carer is in place. They're not always, they're not always the same social worker as the one that assesses you, are they now?
So we've got a small team of social workers that are part of our recruitment team. And they stick with you up until, I think it's about a year or is it until they get their first placement?
Until they get the first place.
Yeah, and then you will transfer into the locality teams then.
So again, I think that's just about making it very accessible to you. So if you're a foster carer in the north area, then your social worker's probably going to be based in that area.
Right, which is a question popping. Am I able to foster a particular age group if I want? Well, that's actually one of the questions I ask you on your inquiry form is have you got a preference as to what age you think you would be interested in fostering? And then it's down to our social worker then, when they come up to you, to have that bit more of an in-depth conversation as to how that need needs to be met, what comes with it, what you're expected to be able to do.
But yeah, I mean, I think really what we say is you can, we can approve somebody for ages nought to eighteen, but you can say that you have a preferred age range. For instance, you might say, I want to foster children from ages five to twelve. And that would be probably the reasons behind that is because it what is what fits with your family.
So that's the important thing for us, isn't it? Obviously trying to keep certain age groups to get, if you've already got your own family, we don't want to be sticking, you can have sixteen-year-old lad if you've got five-year-old girls or anything like that. So you just have to try and make it work.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, what we, we wouldn't recommend is that we have children of the same ages as birth children going in. So if you've got a birth child of, say, twelve, we would probably recommend that you don't, you don't have a child.
About two years.
Yeah, about two years. And that's because that can get quite difficult for those children. You know, it can, it's, it's a big thing and it is a huge thing, obviously, when you've got birth children. It's a big ask when we talk about fostering and we have to make sure that the children are very much on board with this. We talk to your children, we talk to them separately through the assessment and a part of the assessment when we're with you to make sure that they're happy and to make sure that they're totally on board. And then we continue to have to recognise that their involvement, because it's huge. It's, you know, they're sharing their parent and their home. And we, one of the things that we do say is that we, we would never recommend that a birth child and a foster child shares a room. The foster child has to have their own room. That's one of the things that we ask for, is that you have a spare bedroom. There are situations where a, a under-two-year-old can sleep in the room of the foster carer. So there are some people that don't have spare rooms that offer baby care only. But that obviously is very limited as to how long the baby can stay with you. And obviously, then you do have to be not working to be able to care for a baby full time. But yeah, so really, ages of children is really about what you want, what you see as fits with your life and what you've, you know, think is best. And then what we do is to kind of talk to you about whether that, you know, the children that we will have here that we will be able to, that you would be able to care for. So if there's no other questions at the moment, we could talk a little bit more about the processes. Sarah said, basically, once you have that first initial telephone conversation with her, she will then book in an initial home visit with a social worker. So the social worker comes out and meets you and meets your partner, if you have one, and spends probably about an hour, two hour and a half with you and talks a lot more about fostering with Oxfordshire County Council. Gives you the opportunity to ask lots of questions, find out much more about what we offer and what we're looking for. But really, ultimately, the initial home visit is to work out with you whether this is the right time for you to foster. So what we're kind of looking at is if you're making any kind of lifetime decisions over the next six months, I don't know, you were moving home, changing a job.
Having renovations.
Yeah. Then we would say, you know, maybe not put in, you know, carry on with your kind of application to foster at this point. But the initial home visit is that opportunity to talk about whether this is the right time for you. You ask lots of questions and it's the start of your journey. If you then do decide to put an application form in, then obviously, what we do then is allocate that to a social worker who is then there to do your assessment. An assessment can take between four and six months. It involves having between six and eight visits. They come around the house, they spend time with you. As I said, they're talking to your children. They will want to speak to you and your partner, if you have one together. They'll probably do some pieces of work with you separately. It's a, it is a very in-depth process. And that's obviously necessary because we're going to be placing children in your home and we want to make sure that everything is safe for them and safe for you. So it is a, it is a big piece of work. It's an opportunity for you to discuss things with each other, talk about things. Quite often, we have applicants that say, oh, I never would have, never really talked about that in the past because they never really needed to, never had the opportunity to. So it's quite a nice process from that point of view. We have to work with you. So it's about, you know, when it fits in, we'll do visits when it fits in with you. So sometimes it can take a little bit longer because we're working around maybe people are working and they're full time.
Yeah, no, we have got our sort of workers, they are very flexible in terms of, we appreciate that some people work full time, don't finish perhaps till five o'clock. So they will accommodate you as best they can and come out later on in the evening.
Yeah. And then part of the assessment will involve bits and pieces of homework. So you do things like your chronology, your family tree. So that's all things that we do. Also, part of the assessment is our checks, so like the local authority check, your DBS references. We ask for you to provide six, between four and six referees. So they will be members of your family, people that have known you for a long time. You do references from school, if you've got schoolchildren, employers. So these references, we as a social worker ask them to tell us some information about you. And then we follow up a couple of those references and actually meet the person. It might be that we meet them virtually or we meet them face to face. And we just do a little bit more of a thorough chat with your referees. We ask for medicals.
Yeah. You, as part of the process, you will make an appointment with your GP and they will carry out a medical where they will send all that information to our advisor, who will be involved in the whole process as to whether or not they give approval for you to move forward.
Obviously, some people are a little bit worried about their medical history and whether that will have any influence or make any difference about their application to foster. Obviously, what we say is our medical advisor are the people that really tell us. But if you're worried about things like that, for a start, what we would say is tell us straight away and we can do a medical as soon as possible. But if you're worried about things like if you've had some illness that's being treated, then obviously, that's absolutely fine if it's being treated and managed. Some people are worried that they have been treated in the past for things like depression or something like that. Again, that doesn't matter. You know, what we ask for relating to your own personal history, your medical history, anything like that, is just that you're honest and open with us. And then we can kind of work around that and we kind of work through those things.
Yes, we do have a question. If you would foster a preschooler and they go on to preschool?
So if you foster a child under five, then yes, they can go to preschool. What I would say is with, with our children, obviously, they have been through some very traumatic and difficult experiences. And so in some situations, we have to work around what that child is able to manage. And that could be a preschool-aged child or an older child, a child, all of our children are the same.
Same sort of rules, I suppose, with the after-school clubs and breakfast clubs.
Yeah. It's so, it's about, you know, if that child, if the child is able and feels secure enough in their situation, then things like this are just easily managed. But if sometimes for children, the simplest of things or things that we think that they're going to look forward to, like Christmas, is actually something that really knocks them for six and really they get-
Can trigger a lot of-
Yeah. So what we say is we need to consider the needs of the child and make sure that that child can fit with your situation. And if your situation is that you have, they have to go to preschool to fit around, say, you're working, then maybe we would look at a child that we know can manage that. So it's not a, they definitely can and it's not a definitely can't, but we very much do have to think about what that child's needs are.
Basically, a case by case situation.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we have some of our older children, for instance, who might not be attending school full time at the moment. They're only going in a couple of days a week because they have had some really traumatic things going on at home. They're moving into foster care, this is a really difficult time for them. But what we see with the same pattern with in different circumstances, whether it's schooling or their behaviour or wanting to go and go back to clubs and things, is that once they're settled, these things start to fall into place. One of the things that Sarah touched on a bit earlier briefly was about family contact, which is, it's called family time, sorry. And that basically is when a child is still in, it still meets up and spends time with their birth family. So it could be all different members of their birth family. It might be that they go and meet their grandparents. For instance, sometimes a child has actually lived with their grandparents for a period of time before they come in to stay with the foster carers. So they might have, say, fortnightly contact with a grandparent. They might be seeing their mum on a weekly basis. If they've got a sibling who's not placed in the same home as them, then they will have contact with their sibling. Some of this family time is face to face, some is telephone. Sometimes we have children that are placed long terms, in a long-term situation and they might just have family contact, which is through the post. But really, it's very important for foster carers to understand that to a child, their birth family, their wider family, and it's really important to them. They have, they don't move away from not wanting them to be part of their lives in some way usually. So that family time is really important and it's a foster carer's kind of role to manage that. And it might be simple things, like you might take a baby to go and see their birth mum. Or it might be that you're more managing the emotional side of it. Because for a child, sometimes the build-up to going to see their parents can be quite, like, it would be really exciting. And then they might go and then they might come away and they might feel really sad. So it's all about kind of managing that emotional and kind of ups and downs really with things like that and giving them support, which to be honest, is what fostering is all about, which is about managing the, the ups and downs and the emotional trauma that children have been through and giving them the environment and the stability for these children to really flourish and grow into a well kind of managing and balanced children. So we're kind of really looking for people that can kind of manage that.
The foster carers don't, don't do the family time of day. They're just involved in taking the child to the placement.
Yeah, yeah, so that's right. So a family time support worker will actually be in the room with the child. And yeah, so they do that bit of it, but quite often you might do the travelling. And for instance, if you were caring for a baby and we might be, well, we would be working with that baby in the-
With that baby.
We won't be working with that baby, sorry. We'll be working with the mother and the father in the hope that the child can return home. So the contact between a mother and a father and the baby will be very regular. That could be three or four times a week. It won't be, it won't reduce until the decision has been made as to whether the child can go home or not. And in most situations, when a child is first fostered, our aim is for them to go home or they might go to live with another member of the family, so an auntie or a granny. If they are younger and that can't happen, then they might go on to be adopted if they're under the age of about six or seven. And that's why we have what we call different types of fostering, which is what I was talking about earlier. So we have short-term fostering is when a child comes to stay with the carer for a period of anything from a couple of months to maybe a couple of years, until decisions are made, until a permanent plan has been put in place for the child. Or then we have long-term fostering, which is when a child is going to live with you until they're independent.
It's going nuts. Get some questions coming through now. So we've got, what support would I get when I first start fostering? First question.
When you first start fostering, then as I said, you have a dedicated social worker who comes around the house and spends time with you. There is a lot of support put in place when you have your first child, because obviously, that's all very new to you. You get lots of support from other foster carers, so from a carer coordinator who's an experienced foster carer. So it's kind of packaged put around. And also, the child themselves have a social worker. So the child's social worker is involved to, to make sure that your needs are being met and so are the child's needs are met.
Next question would be, we are a couple. Would we both be equally responsible or do you employ just one of us?
So no, we, the, the members of the household are assessed. So therefore, if you are married or you are living together, then you are both assessed as foster carers. And obviously, we understand that sometimes one of you might have a more main role in the fostering. But you both have to go through the assessment, you both have to do all the training and then you are both joint foster carers and responsible for that child.
We currently have quite busy weekends, seeing friends and family. Is it reasonable to expect a foster child to fit in with this? Or are you looking for carers who are more home-based?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not. The more you can get a child involved in what you are doing, the more settled they're going to feel.
Yeah, no, I think that's absolutely right. And I think it's really important that our children have all the opportunities that any other child has. So they should have opportunities to go to paddle tennis and football and swimming and different clubs, be part of your family, which will also involve be part of your wider family and your friends. So if you go visiting your sister, then you take the foster child with you and they become part of all of the things that you do. So that's, I mean, for us, that's a great thing that we, that people do that.
Because you think, you know, you don't know what trauma that child has gone through and being part of a family unit might be the one thing that they want more than anything in the world.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Some of our foster carers ask if they would be taking a child with them on holiday, which again- which again is something that we would very much hope that you would want to do that. We appreciate that there are going to be occasions where you might want to have some time by yourselves and you might want to have some time even with your own children. But we do encourage you to take a foster child on holiday with you. There will be some circumstances where that might not be completely possible if you want to go abroad. If we haven't got the passport for a fostered child, which sometimes does happen because we have to ask for that passport. So sometimes that's a little bit difficult. But yeah, we very much hope that everything that you do would involve a foster child.
But that's where the use of our relief carers comes into play. Because don't feel that, oh, we know we're going to get married next year and we're going to have a honeymoon, so we better wait. You have got that opportunity to start the process. If you have got a placement, then that's where our relief carers come into play.
Yeah, yeah, there will be occasions and relief carers, sorry for anyone that, I kind of touched on it very briefly at the beginning. Relief carers are people, foster carers that only foster at the weekend. So they are, they might work full-time, have very busy lives in the week and just want to foster at weekends. This is something that we do very much need because as Sarah said, that's the way we, foster carers are supporting each other. And also sometimes we have children who are living at home, but their family are going through a particular time of crisis. And if we just put in place that one weekend a month for them to have a break and stay with foster carers, then that can really keep that family situation going. They can, you know, and that's better than a child going into full-time foster care if that's not absolutely necessary.
So touching kind of basically are then. Would the foster child come from somewhere very local to us or from another town?
Obviously, when it's, and if it's appropriate, then a child might well come from the town that you live in. We very much would not do that if that isn't going to work because we, there might be situations where it would be totally inappropriate for the child to kind of just bump into members of their family in the street when it's not a planned situation. But obviously, it's quite possible in a county as the size of Oxfordshire to have a child who was living in Abingdon to be placed very safely with foster carers in Banbury. So again, a situation like that is totally dependent, case-by-case situation, on the child's needs. But we always will make our foster carers aware of, you know, where a child came from and if there are any things that they should look out for.
But our main purpose is to keep all our children local. So all of children will be Oxfordshire.
Yeah, all of the children are Oxfordshire children that we are placing with our carers. And one of the main reasons that we are very much looking for, to recruit more foster carers in Oxfordshire is because if we don't have enough of our own local carers, then children are being, are going to foster carers that live outside of the county, which is really not the best situation because what that means is they're further distance from their school, they'll have to change schools. They're away from their friends and family and the things that really matter. And we, we want to be able to offer as much continuity as possible for these children because obviously they're going through this quite difficult and traumatic time. So if they can continue with their school for at least a short period of time, then that's really important to them.
Everyone, what are the alternatives to full-time foster caring?
The alternatives to full-time foster caring is it that you do it at weekends only. You don't have to foster every single weekend. So some, we have some people that foster just one weekend a month. And that might be, that would probably be the same child, one weekend a month for a period of times. Some people foster more than one child on a relief basis. So therefore they have different children, different weekends. Some people can still offer school holiday care. So they might be able to just do a couple of weeks during the school holidays.
Especially if their teachers themselves, they've got the whole six-week summer holiday off as well.
Yeah. And then the other thing that we do have are people that offer emergency only. So basically, a lot of the children that we are placing with foster carers, it's a planned kind of process. So it's a planned process from the point of view of the children moving away from their family and staying with our foster carers. There are some situations where a child suddenly is in need of foster care. So it could be something like a family breakdown where a child is, has taken to a police station and the parents are no longer able to look after them. So this kind of emergency situation quite often happens. At times, not in the week, it could be Friday evening, it could be twelve o'clock at night on a Saturday. And we have carers that literally are on our, what we call our kind of emergency duty list. And we can ring them at twelve o'clock at night and say, we have a child who is six years old and we need to place them now for the next couple of days until we can find a solution. Whether that's that they go straight home, whether that's that they stay with another foster carer for a period of time until that situation's resolved. So emergency foster carers really are basically doing it for a few days at a time. But that situation can linger maybe for more than a few days on the odd occasion. So it still has to work around whether you, how available you are really.
A lot of people that come to us are, they're keen to foster and they might say to us, but we're really interested, but we're not quite ready. Is there anything that they, you know, you can offer us instead or is there anything that we can do instead? And then that's where our other scheme and that big brother, big sister comes in.
Yeah, so for some people, they're not able to foster at this point in time. Fostering is something that people tend to think about over a long period of time. So it could be that you've been thinking about fostering for many years, but it's when is the right time for you to foster? And you have to work around everything, you know, it could be whether you're buying a house, whether you're at college or whatever. There's loads of things that you're waiting for to the next step until you can start. And for some people, they might not be at the stage where they can foster yet, but they want to be involved. And that's where big brother, big sister comes into play. So that's a local scheme where you befriend a fostered child. And you do things like you take them out to the cinema maybe, or you regularly help them with maybe their homework or something like that. So you meet up with them on a regular occurrence and you do that for a period of time and you're obviously connected to one child. And then we have people that do that for a while and then at some point they might start fostering from there on. So it's a really nice thing to be able to get involved in, but that is a voluntary scheme. So you're not paid to be involved in that.
I suppose we could talk about another really big part of what we do and the support that carers can get is when they get involved with the OFCA.
Yeah, so the OFCA is the Oxfordshire Foster Care Association, which is a local charity. They're an association that are formed by foster carers, Oxfordshire foster carers. And they raise lots of money in order to put on events and activities for our children. So we're really lucky that they're such an active group. And for instance, they do pantomime trip once a year. So they buy about three hundred tickets and children. And we include the, for the pantomime, the foster carers and the birth children go off and they do the pantomime, go to pantomime. But there's loads of regular things. At the moment, they're doing trampolining in Bista. They go to various different zoos. There's just loads and loads of activities that they.
Summer.
Yeah. And they do things as well that are there very much to support the foster carers and to kind of inform foster carers of more about fostering. So they put on a foster carers forum. We have a picnic once a year, which is a social event for our foster carers. We very much try to encourage you to spend time together because the support that you can get from each other is really important. And the OFCA is, is something that's really enabling you to get together as a group and do things together. I suppose one of the things that's quite interesting and that people sometimes ask are how many foster carers are there in Oxfordshire? And we've got around two hundred and seventy-odd fostering households. Now, some of those are what we call kinship carers. So they're family members that are caring for children that they know. So for, for instance, like an auntie might be caring for their nephew or niece. We have about a hundred and fifty mainstream, what we call mainstream, carers. And their carers are like, and that don't know the children that are coming in brand-new and fostering.
But I think the scary figure is how many children have we got in foster care in comparison?
So we have around seven hundred, probably in about eighty at the moment, children who are what we say, they are being cared for by Oxfordshire County Council. Now, not all of those will be in what we call general fostering. Some of those might be living in, we've got a number of very small care homes within Oxfordshire. So some of them might be living with them. But yeah, we do have an awful lot more children than we, we have. So that's why we, we need more foster carers. Some of those will be sibling groups. It's really, really great for us if foster carers are able to offer to care for more than one child. We have sibling groups. Sometimes, for instance, there was placement request, it's called, through for a family, a group of four today. Now, what we would love is to be able to place all of those children together. Sometimes that's not possible because how many people have the room and ability to do that? But that's why we would then be talking about family time between siblings. So if we do have to have children that aren't able to live together, then those foster carers would regularly be arranging for family time between the sibling groups.
Got five minutes left. So can you talk, can you talk to us a bit more about how this would affect our own children?
I think it's really important to say that, which I mentioned before, that right from the beginning, we make sure that your children are on board with this, that they really want to be part of a foster family because they very much are part of the family. It's all of you that are doing it. And if, in some ways, the, your own children are the kind of ones that can break that kind of difficulty, a child.
Child might find it easier talking to another child than talking to an adult, especially if they've come from that type of background where that they perhaps not had the support from their own parents and find it quite difficult to know how to trust an adult. So having an older child in the house might put their mind at ease.
Yeah, and I think it's really important. I fostered myself, I relief, I offered relief care quite a few years ago before I did this job. And looking back now, because my children are now grown up, they absolutely loved being able to be involved in fostering. The two older ones, because I had younger foster children, the two older ones got involved from kind of like, it was like, you know, playing, being care. Yeah, and they loved that. They loved, you know, going to the park and being able to do things like that. But ultimately, it's given them the opportunity to see, and at the time, to be able to see children who weren't as lucky as them from some point of view and things. And my eldest daughter is very seriously thinking about fostering herself because of her experience of being part of a foster family. And we do have quite a few foster carers that have grown up and become foster carers themselves, children of foster carers. So I think that that shows what a positive experience it is.
But a lot of, surprisingly, when we have done events, it's surprising how many children are actually the ones pushing their parents to want to do it.
Yeah, no, I think it's, yeah, I think it is something that, and I think it's becoming something that, you know, should be talked about a lot more in schools and things. So people are much more aware. Children really want to, you know, help other children, don't they? So I think that's a kind of positive thing. But yeah, I mean, ultimately, if at some point you're, even at the anywhere point through the assessment, if you felt that your children were beginning to worry about this and wonder whether it was the right thing, then we would, you know, wholeheartedly say, well, then we should pause it and we should stop and we should wait until everybody is back on board with it.
Have those discussions with children and find out where they're headed at.
And obviously, you could, we could put you in contact with foster carers that have children. So we always encourage that, is for you to speak to our foster carers. Right from the beginning, we can offer you that telephone conversation with one of our foster carers. So you get a real idea of what it's like to foster with us by someone that's doing it.
Yeah. We've, we've come to the end of our time.
Okay, well, just to say thank you very much to everyone that joined us. Thank you very much for all the questions. And obviously, we are here at any point for you to ask any, you know, other questions that you have. Sarah will be at the end of the phone or on the end of the email. So please contact us if you want to find out any more about fostering with us.
Thank you for joining.
Thank you.